Let's do it. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November nineteenth. Warren Zoning Board of Review. I am Jason Raynon, your chairman and emcee for the evening. To my right is Jason Nystrom, then Bert Rodriguez, and our vice chair Chuck Thibodeau. We are a skeleton crew this evening. In order to be able to hear a matter, we need four individuals. In order to approve a motion, we need four votes. So unfortunately, with only four people on the board, we will need all four votes in order to be able to pass any motion of business this evening. We will start with the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Is there any discussion of the minutes circulated?
I approve or move approval of the minutes.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. So, basic process for the evening, we will read an application. We will ask the applicants to come forward to the podium. Tell us a little bit about what it is that you would like to do. Answer any questions that the board may have for you upfront. We will open a public portion, in which case any individual from the public may feel free to come up to the podium and speak for or against the matter at hand. When the public portion closes, we will ask the applicant to come back to the podium to either provide additional answers, add additional comments, or to respond to anything that was brought up during the public portion. Once those comments are concluded, the board will decide how it's going to move forward, and we'll kind of kick it off from there. We'll start with old business. This is going to be application ZB twenty-five, twenty-six. Warren Junction LLC owner and Aleah Johnson applicant, Eighth Turner Street, Platte Map Four, Lot Thirty-nine. Request for a special use permit to allow a restaurant in the Village Business zoning district. Your name and current address. Current address, yes.
To Loveland Avenue.
Nope. There we go.
Aleah Johnson to Loveland Avenue, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Excellent. Tell us a little bit about what you would like to do.
Perfect. So we are doing a retro sandwich shop and a speakeasy. So the long part of the building next to the bike path would be the retro sandwich shop. Bathroom space and kitchen space, and then the other part that jets out on the right side of it will be the speakeasy space.
Excellent. For the members of the board, we are in receipt of an updated ground plan on eight and a half by eleven. Haley, we called that Exhibit A, and an updated plat map layout and parking layout, which we have called Exhibit B. So can you tell us a little bit about the the nature of the operation? Is it going to be just simple sandwiches, cold food?
Sure. So during the day, it'll be the sandwich shop, soup salad sandwiches, some specialty stuff, but also regular deli sandwiches. In the evening, it will be the speakeasy, where we'll have small bites, so more like tapas, and cocktails, beer, wine, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And like I said, that's the evening, and the sandwich shop would be during the day.
Gotcha. They're gonna, do you anticipate any overlap of the hours?
Possibly maybe like an hour or two, but I don't think anything more than that.
This is essentially fitting within the current footprint of the building, correct? There's no renovations involved?
Correct.
And the current property, is this where the, refresh my memory, is this where the?
Edible arrangements?
Yes.
Yes.
It's been a day, yes.
No worries. Yeah, it's where the edible arrangements was.
All right. Now, I know you indicated that the building is going to be, specific parts of the building are going to be going for different uses. So the sandwich shop, is that exclusively going to be used for the sandwich shop, or will the speakeasy flow over into that after hours?
Exclusively for the sandwich shop. The only thing that may flow over is an ice maker that's currently in place, but like, that's just staff coming in and out. And the only other thing would be the restrooms. There is a hallway in between both where they can be accessed by staff or customers.
All right. Yeah, but basically, other than that possible hour overlap, when one is open, the other one's going to be closed off and vice versa.
Correct.
Okay.
Plans for trash disposal? Is there a dumpster on site? Will you be using town disposal?
There's a dumpster on site right now, but we'll be using the same dumpster that we use for the company, Homes Disposal, for our dumpster removal, and it'll be located where the old dumpster was. The only difference is, is we took down the fence that was there because it was falling over, and we'll replace that to to close it in from the bike path.
Okay. How about recycling? Are you, do you plan on using recycling bins or utilizing homes for that as well?
Probably utilizing homes for that. They'll come and pick up. So two dumpsters possibly.
What are your proposed hours of operations for the sandwich shop?
Oh, I gave it to you, and I don't remember what I gave to you. I think it was-
Ten to ten.
Yeah, so I would say like probably ten to four or five, and then four, four or five to about ten PM for the speakeasy.
Do we need to delineate between the two, or can we just have hours of operation toward it?
I guess that would be a question for the solicitor. Do we consider this sort of a restaurant facility with two separate sections rather than two different businesses?
I think, yeah, a little complicated as to what's mine, which is sandwich shop, but it's not, I would recommend just one time versus two separate.
Okay, and just I-
Give a couple of thoughts.
Yeah, I guess just to, just for my own clarification, line with that. The sandwich shop and the speakeasy, are they all going to, does that all fall under the name you've tentatively given, Wilma and Basil's Counter?
Correct. So we'll have a sign outside of the speakeasy that says Basil's Back Room, but it's under, it falls, everything falls under Wilma and Basil's Counter.
Okay. Yeah, so both, they're both going to be the same company, basically.
Yes, they're very much so the same company.
Yeah, I know, I'm just-
Yeah, it, it, you really can't separate the two.
Yeah. I get that. I just wanted, just for clarification, to make sure it's, it's the same entity, basically. That's all.
Yeah.
And also if it makes you feel or-
This is my business. This is my business partner, Debbie.
Sorry.
Ask a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
You went before the town council for your liquor license.
Yes.
Our liquor license was a specific just for the speakeasy or was it?
It was. Yeah, we're not doing anything alcohol with the sandwich. Like, we literally want to, like, so we're going to have two walls. So during the day, these two walls will be open, and we'll be using the kitchen, I mean, the kitchen to the sandwich shop. So during the day, it's like this.
Yeah.
And then once we close the sandwich shop, it'll go, two, two walls will just slide over, and then it'll just be to the two bathrooms. So people from the speakeasy can only go to those two bathrooms. The kitchen will not be using the door. It's going through a window. So it's, there's no one coming in and out of the kitchen, and no one going in and out of the sandwich shop once we close.
And did you provide hours of operation to the town council for any of those licenses?
Yeah, for the, for the speakeasy. So for the sandwich shop, it's ten to four or five, and then the speakeasy.
But just keep it consistent then, I would-
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Do we have those times? Is that the times that you listed here that you gave to?
Yeah, I just went to ten because that's what time the the business as a whole will be open.
Okay.
But the speak, the sandwich shop will be like ten to four or five. We're gonna play it by ear and kind of see what, are we getting business for sandwiches at five o'clock? If not, we'll close earlier, probably around four, and the speakeasy will be open around four to ten.
So you gave the town, you gave the town council two separate times, is that correct?
I put it in as ten to ten.
Okay, okay.
Because it was going under one business. It's under one business.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'd be concerned to split it, because you really couldn't split this if they decided to sell off one of the businesses to another person to run it. You know what I'm saying? If they decided, well, we don't want to run the speakeasy, we're gonna-
Sure, just stay consistent with the license.
As one business.
Yeah.
Yeah, because one of my concerns is that if, when it's all operating as one entity, like you said, you've got a plan in place, but what if down the road, something gets chopped off and spun off? I'm just worried about that causing some problems down the road.
I will say, because of the way the the layout is going to be inside, I can't see that possibly working. It would have to be a full sale. If we were to sell the business, it would be a full sale of the business and the building itself, so.
And we wouldn't know if, yeah, but we don't know if the next person would come in and try to split it into two businesses.
Right, right.
That, we're just trying to protect-
Yeah, I totally understand.
So ten to ten seems like it packages it.
Yeah.
And then if they want to sell sandwiches later, they can. It's up to them.
They just gotta follow their licenses.
We were, when we were in front of the council, they told us to do whatever hours our customers eventually want, so.
So there's a possibility down the road. It could be eleven o'clock, but I don't see, I just, I've been in the bar business for a very long time, and I don't, I'm, we're not really interested in being a late night.
Yeah, so when it, when it comes to the hours,
Yep.
I know you say, well, maybe I could see us going down the road till eleven o'clock. If you want to do that, you gotta come back here and get permission to be open later. So.
Right.
Just want to make you aware.
Yes, I, yep, totally know that.
They're very smart on doing the ten PM close. Nothing good happens after eleven.
Right, exactly.
That's where the fight and all of the garbage starts.
That was eleven.
Well, it used to be one.
Yeah.
As far as deliveries on the property, I'm imagining there would be food and alcohol deliveries usually in the morning, I'm assuming?
That's when we're going to do our best to have them set up that way. I just, again, know from being in the bar business, liquor reps get backed up and, you know, things come later. However, everything's coming in from the Market Street side. So the back of the building, so it'll go directly into the kitchen, because the kitchen access is from Market Street.
One of the, one of the conditions that we often put onto special use permits for restaurants, particularly in downtown and Water Street, is that all delivery trucks must unload in the parking lot. They cannot park on the street.
Yes, thanks. Yeah. I mean, we're lucky that we have the front and back parking lot for that, so.
Perfect.
And even with the two dumpsters, it doesn't take up any of the parking lot?
Great. Okay.
I think too, we've also often done a time constraints as well.
Uh, yes, I think it's-
I believe no food deliveries or trash before eight AM or after six PM.
I think that's-
Okay. Yeah, we-
Just so you're not waking people up with the-
Oh, no, totally understand. We're, we're pretty used to that with Dell's as well, so.
And it's the same company, so they'll probably hit us at the same.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's see. Any other questions or concerns from the board? And your address?
Four Pounder Ave, Waltham, Massachusetts.
All right, very good. I have a funny feeling you can stay where you are, but effectively speaking, we're going to open the public portion if there is anyone who would like to speak on this application. Seeing none, we will close the public portion and ask if there is anything else that you would like to tell the board.
I think we're just really excited to continue our, being part of the community and expanding what we did at Dell's over at the speakeasy. So we're excited to do this.
Great. Are there any other questions from the board? Is anyone prepared with a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve applicant ZB two-five-two-six. Warren Junction LLC owner and-
Aleah.
Aleah Johnson?
Yep.
I can't see with glasses.
That's okay.
Uh, applicant Eight, Turner Avenue Street, I'm sorry, Turner Street, excuse me, Platte Map Four, Lot Thirty-nine. Request for a special use permit to allow a restaurant in the Village Business zoning district. The special use will be compatible with the neighboring land uses, which we already know there are businesses like yours in the immediate area. The special use permit will not create a hazard in the neighborhood. We've seen no evidence of that. No one's come forward to say otherwise. And the special use permit will be compatible with the community and comprehensive plan. The public convenience and welfare will be served with sandwiches and lovely beverages. The only thing we, the board would like to add is that the business would be Monday through Sunday, from ten AM till ten PM. The speakeasy operation would run Thursday through Sunday, same times. Is that correct? Ten to ten?
The evening part portion of it, yeah. But yeah, it'll be ten to ten on this stage. Yeah.
Uh, the applicant is to use private trash and recycle disposal. And all deliveries coming into the business must be made in the parking lot of said business.
And that no deliveries or trash removal take place before eight AM or after six PM.
Okay. Are there any further conditions? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck to you both.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Moving on to new business, we'll move to application ZB twenty-five dash twenty-eight. Keith and Kathleen Morton, owner and applicant, one oh four Birch Swamp Road, Platte Map Twenty-two, Lot One thirty. Request for variance to construct an accessory structure with more than the allowed accessory structures on a property in an R forty Kikemewett overlay zoning district. Good evening to you both.
Aye.
Uh, name and current address, please.
Keith Morton, one oh four Birch Swamp Road.
Kathleen Morton, same address.
Excellent. Tell us a little about what you would like to do.
Yeah, we're planning to build a second accessory dwelling unit, basically thirty-six by twenty-eight, single-story home on the property, and the plan is for our daughter and her family to live in our current house, and we would move into this, kind of age in place is the goal.
Nice. Can you tell us a little bit about what the existing accessory building on the property is?
Sure, it's a twenty by twenty-two story and a half barn.
Okay.
Yeah, timber frame barn that we built in twenty fifteen.
Uh, how is that accessory structure currently used? Is that your garage or a workshop?
Workshop, primarily, storage workshop.
But it has a, it has a current use to it. It is not lying vacant?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I've been working with the applicant for almost a year, I believe now. They came to me with this idea. This is actually, the original ADU law was to put exactly what they want to do. They want to age in place. They wanted to use the existing barn. We looked at this several times, looked to see how it just, it wouldn't work. So that's why they are going to go with the option of trying to put another structure, but the barn, it's actually, it's a well-built barn. It's very nice. The idea of making that an ADU is gonna, was gonna be phenomenal, but it just wasn't gonna work out. So that's why they're here. To have, they already have the barn, keep the barn in the house. The lot is more than enough in size, so just to, I just didn't want to kind of expedite it because we've been working on this for a year.
Sure. So I understand this, because these things still confuse me. Because there's already an accessory building on the property, they need permission to put one to live in.
So per ordinance, you can only have one accessory structure. So they already have an accessory structure. They want to make another one on-
So if you, this is just my knowledge versus that. So if you already had a separate garage that wasn't attached to your house, and you wanted to go put a ADU, you'd have to get-
No, no. So anything over twenty thousand square feet,
Okay.
which this law is well over twenty thousand square feet. So if, if the original plan to convert the existing barn into an ADU, we would not be here today.
Right. So if that existing barn was a garage, it'd be the same situation. They'd still need to come in because it's already a separate building.
No.
If it was a garage versus a barn, it would have-
No, what you're saying is, it's a detached, and they were-
Any detached buildings counts, then if you want to add a dwelling.
Yeah, yes, I thought, correction, I thought that you were saying it was a garage.
It's not why they even need to be here, but no, I understand.
Because they already have an existing-
Right, okay.
accessory, and you can only have one, so the request, the relief they're requesting is to have two.
But they're not living in, they're not building it into an ADU. They're just-
The new one will be built.
The new one will be, but I'm saying it's not like they have an existing living.
Yeah. We, we had our original engineer look at the plan to see if we could convert it into a dwelling as opposed to just a barn. And he said, you know, he's like, no.
No, no, I understand. This is more of my confusion. These laws are changing so bad.
Because there's like accessory buildings versus accessory-
Right. So if you had a freeway attaching this barn to your house, there wouldn't be an issue. You wouldn't even have to stop there. I'm just trying to, the laws are changing so fast, it's hard to keep up.
Yeah.
Very good. I guess this is more of a curiosity question than anything else. With the new accessory dwelling unit, is there any impact to sewer or septic systems on the property?
We're working with Mount Hope Engineering to get a separate septic system for this, this house.
Gotcha. Okay, and that would obviously have to go through whatever the appropriate permitting-
Right, we're going through, right, DEM and-
DEM's been out.
Yeah, we're probably four fifths of the way through with that process, and it's like it will work fine.
Nothing's easy.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I have a funny feeling it's the same situation for you two, so please stay where you are. We will officially open the public portion of the evening. If there is anyone who wishes to speak on this application, please come forward. I'm seeing no one. We'll close the public portion. Is there anything else that the two of you would like us to know about the application?
I think the only thing I'd add, maybe not necessary, is we have spoken at length with our butters, and they're all enthusiastic about the project, so.
All three of them. They're on a farm, right?
Clearly, I see that. It's nice living off of the beach path.
Yeah, we have more, more coyotes around.
I was gonna say deer and coyotes. They have any complaints about this?
Are there any other questions from the board?
Just because there have been so many changes with the ADU, it's, we're just approving the purpose. We don't need to get into any of the other details that we would have had to before previously. That's, okay, yeah, that's why. I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Chair, the only thing I would suggest is if the applicant does not object to it, is just to put a condition that the current bond cannot be converted into a accessory dwelling unit. Just, you own it today, but we don't know who owns it.
Yes.
Next. So, yeah, exactly. So as a condition, it stays- Yeah, exactly. If you don't object to it, I think that's an appropriate condition.
Does that make sense to the members of the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. You want me to take a shot at this?
Yeah, go for it.
I make a motion to approve application ZB twenty-five dash twenty-six, I'm sorry. ZB twenty-five dash twenty-eight Keith and Kathleen Morton, owner and applicant, one oh four Swamp Road, Birch Swamp Road, Platte Map Twenty-two, Lot One thirty, for regress for variance to construct an accessories structure with more than the allowed accessory structures on the property in the R forty Kikemewett overlay district. We want to put a motion, a condition on it, that the current bond on the property of the first accessory dwelling cannot be turned into an additional living dwell.
You want to run through the conditions?
That's the condi, the conditions.
No, no, the standards.
The standards. I'm not sitting in front of it. I don't have them in front of me. I only got a special use one.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, can't read that. Uh, the hardship for the applicant would be that they wouldn't be able to let their children move into the house. It's not the result of any prior action the applicant has made. The bond was already existing on the property. It could not, it cannot be used.
Yeah, to not be convertible to a dwelling unit.
Yep. That granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impact the intent or the purpose of the zoning ordinance. It will not, they're on a, I believe, what, fifty-five thousand square, fifty-two thousand square foot lot. The granting of dimensional variance, that hardship suffered by the owner or the subject of the property of the dimensional variance is not, is not granted amounts to more than mere inconvenience. It would be, it's not more than a mere inconvenience for them, because there, it's just the fact that they have an existing barn that's not attached to the house, so it's not allowing them to add that in.
And if this were to not be granted, it would prevent this couple from aging in place?
Correct.
Are there any additional conditions on this motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
But then it's still like, you know, be honest with me, because I can't-
Really? I can't see a gem. They handed me that sheet. I couldn't read it.
That's how I sent font, man. That's not good.
It's getting bad.
Moving on to our next application, it's application ZB twenty-five dash twenty-nine, Lobelia Hill and Alfred Hill Junior. Owner and Alfred Hill applicant, Seventy-three Schoolhouse Road, Platte Map Twenty-one, Lot Two ninety-two. Request for variance to construct, I believe that's supposed to be to construct a fence in the front yard, greater than three feet in height in the R forty Kikemewett overlay zoning district. Good evening to you both.
Good evening.
Please tell us a little bit about what has happened.
Um, so we, we have the six-foot fence. Obviously, we, we want to just have a variance to keep, to have it approved to have a six-foot fence.
Gotcha.
Versus a three-foot fence.
So when the fence went up, you were not aware of the zoning ordinance? It was one of those?
Not entirely, yeah.
We need to get their names.
I'm sorry, Alfred Hill, Alfred Hill, Seventy-three Schoolhouse Road.
Lobelia Hill, same address.
Um, and I believe, believe in the packet, we do have photos of the, the current fence in its position, correct?
Correct.
That is the nature of the fence. There's no plan to paint it or stain it. What we're seeing in the photos is, is the finished fence?
Yes.
I thought they had animals in there. That's why they put it up.
Well.
So this came way of, there were complaints, both on the property and from the property owner, that they were getting trash and debris into their property. There are, behind this fence, they do have animals. I believe you have goats.
We have goats, chickens, turkeys.
So, so this, so this fence does two things. It stops, I mean, a couple of more, but it stops the, any type of trash and debris that was going into the property and actually harming the animals. And it also provides a protection for the animals and also a visual protection for the animals. So that's, and I already spoke with the applicant on this. They, they weren't aware of the the height restriction because of the, it's, this is a unique lot. I don't know if, if you're familiar with, this was the lot that had the abandoned house on it for many years. And so it's actually like, it's like two lots, so their, their home is more towards the west on a lot, and this is more toward, this is the easterly side of the wall.
And this is another situation where technically speaking, the front yard is anything forward of a line parallel to the front of the house?
Uh, this is probably one of the most unique pieces of property with a fence put on it. I mean, there's, it's, there's many different, yes, yes. It's a corner lot, it's a double lot, and there was, so the applicant already, when the fence was installed, there was an issue with the site at the corner, the corner of Schoolhouse and Serpentine. The company, the installation company came back out and they rectified that. So that has, then now there is the vision at the corner there. So the, the matter at hand would be that the fence being greater than three feet in what we would refer to as the front yard.
Gotcha. And the adjustment to the corner is the plan that's included in the packet, showing it chamfered off for-
Yes, yes.
And the fact that they're raising animals doesn't, this fence doesn't fall under any farming rules or rights or anything like that? Because it's not enough acreage or?
I don't believe so. The, 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 the animals are penned inside, but this gives more protection for both the, you know, like I mentioned, debris coming in, vehicles going by.
Yeah, we did have to file a-
Yeah, we did have to file a police report for a cou- a couple of, same gentleman kept coming by our property a few times. It was kind of getting annoying. So yeah, between that and a couple of other people just showing up at the pro- you know how it is, they just. Showing up at the property, they think it's a petting zoo. We've had to put signs up. So I mean, it's.
My son has on his farm road. Cause people just started driving down.
So the location of the fence now, even though it's been pulled back a little bit, i- is there any obstruction from. Vehicles approaching um. Uh Schoolhouse from Serpentine? Is there any obstruction from the vehicles coming down?
No.
Uh east to west?
None.
No. As, do we know if there's any, any accidents in that, since that fence has been put up?
Uh to the best of my knowledge, no, but I can get that information for you.
Maybe on the bridge, though, coming uh on the right side. I've seen a couple of things happen on the bridge.
Yeah, so that's a whole different matter.
But they're not blocking the view. That's what they repaired when.
So the 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 original complaint was two, was two complaints. One was the vision at the corner that you're addressing. And the other one was the fact that there was a six foot fence in the front yard. So the 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 vision at corner was corrected. The, as I said, the installation company came out, they rectified that problem. And now what we have is the the fence greater than three feet in the front.
So I just want to make sure I understand. You guys are the ones that put up the fence.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, to cor- to correct that, it was.
What I'm getting at is, you as the property owners, you are the ones that paid for and had the fence installed.
Yes.
Okay.
And it actually, it cleans it up because they've got the pens in there for the goats, so the goats aren't getting affected by the cars. Cleans the whole, it looks nice.
You're going at is the, creating the wrong hardship.
Yeah, I, so I'm just, I'm gonna put it out there. I'm familiar with the property. I drive through that area quite a bit if I'm trying, if traffic is really gummed up. The other way, getting into town. I've got a few concerns. One is taking action and now coming back to seek forgiveness. I've, we've seen. Now with you, now with this applicant in particular, we've seen this a few times. And it's problematic on my end because. We we end up, you know, just memorializing what's already happened when in fact, if there was a fence that was gonna be put up. Should it, there should have been checks done to make sure this could have been built. That's problem number one. With that I have. Problem number two. Um you know, which says it is a hardship that the applicant has created. Problem number two I have is, I think by granting allowing the six foot fence. This does alter the general character of the area. This is a rural area. You've got some farms. You've got the horse farm a little further up the road. The only. It's a six foot fence. It jumps out at you. And I know it's new and it'll weather with time. It's, it jumps out. It's very stark. And from my perspective, I, when it went up. It it doesn't fit the area, in my opinion. Um I'm having a hard time and I get it. These things are expensive. I get that. I'm having a hard time wrestling with this one.
Wh- what are the rules on where you can have a, where you can and can't have a six foot fence?
So we we uh changed the ordinance, I think two years ago, it used to be you could only have it from the backyard. But now we're allowed in the, in this front yard. Uh excuse me, it's the side yard from the front point of the building to the backyard.
So, well, how do you, this, this is, you're saying this is the front yard?
They're, they consider it, they're, no, you consider your side.
Where is your, where is your, where where is your mailing address? So that would be the side.
Yes, correct. It's the, so if there's anything. It would be from the the furthest point of the house towards Schoolhouse Road. Towards Schoolhouse Road. That would be the violation because technically by the.
So up in the front is where they're.
Yes, so by the ordinance, anything from the front of the house. Side of the house and back can be six feet. Anything from the front of the house, side and front is three feet.
Gotcha. So this, it's a. It's not the whole thing. It's just up in the front that we have the problem, but they have to, they've also got to contain the animals. I know they're penned, but they still could get out.
Even with a three foot fence?
Oh, you get, a goat could jump a three foot fence. They had to put up, what, an eight foot fence and stop the deer from getting in at the um. Community garden on the other side, but I think it's a wire fence.
I get all of it. Like, but from the rate practical side, I get it why they wanted to do the six foot fence. Like I said, my big concerns are. The hard, the the, from my perspective, the hardship was created by the applicant and then it it just doesn't fit with the area. I'm trying to figure out, find a way to rectify and work with that. Do we have, I'm, for whatever reason, I'm having a hard time digging through my uh.
I think the hardship by the applicant, and this is from, because I've been working with the applicant on this. I think they truly didn't know. And that's one thing that this, that we, you know, we don't have a fence permit in this town. Other towns have fence permits. We don't. So fences, you know, in good faith, the applicant. Hired a company who he put their faith into that they were gonna put up the fence to meet the code. Unfortunately, they didn't. Um and and I've addressed that with the applicant and I and I truly believe that that's, I mean, I think, you know, that's what they were under the impression. It's something that I've I've always wanted to do in this town is have a fence permit because of these issues. This isn't, as as you've mentioned, this isn't the first that's come before us. Where people put up fences and they don't know.
Right. So it's really, I mean, the fence, I know, I get it. It's not right in a certain spot, but they would never know that. Because if you go hire a fence company, they know and warrant, they don't have to pull a permit. So they're just like, you can put up whatever you want. So unless we update our zoning rules, we're gonna keep running into this and I'm having a hard time blaming them. If they didn't go get a permit from Matt and they had to get a permit and they put up a six foot fence, now they're wrong. But if we don't have any kind of checks and balances, you can do this. And now we're stuck dealing with it, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, like I got, I'm not trying to be the bad guy here. I just.
No, no, I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah.
I get where you're coming from, but I get and I understand it. Maybe we need to start talking about offensive limits. That or or fence permits. That way, if they don't come through Matt. They did it on purpose because nobody's gonna put a fence up and warrant if we have a fence. It's like building a house in Warren. No, no contract. They shown up the house. And putting a house together without a permit because they know they have to have.
Once the entities that do that work know a permit is required.
It's gonna, this, then they would have had to come in front of us initially and said, well, this section of fence, they would have been working with Matt on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether they would have cut the fence down in the front or.
I think the other thing to bear in mind here as far as it being six feet tall is we have heard testimony that it's also a security issue. That there are people walking onto the property because they see the kinds of things that are on the property. They wanna either investigate or they want to, you know, walk onto the property because of what they've seen. I think under the circumstances, since it is off center from the body of the house. And essentially enclosing the area where there has been documented evidence of people walking onto the property. To play with the animals or what have you. I think considering this a valid security fence at six feet tall is not a stretch.
Since this became known as that this was an issue and now, you know. This is an issue with the six foot fence. Has there been any communication with the company that puts your fence in about this?
In regards to the.
Like, have you guys called, so you found out about this is which is why you're here?
Right.
Did you call the fence guy and say, hey, what, something to the effect of what gives?
We discussed it with them, yeah, and that's.
What do they say?
They initially came out and repaired that one section. And I mean, but as far as the six foot section. When we discussed with them the plans of putting it up. It was under the impression that that is our side yard, which is what we were under the impression of because of how we use it. And, you know, now, of course, we understand that that is not the case. But um, so that's, I mean, we did, of course, communicate with them immediately. We told them, you know, we communicated the information we had received. Through uh the the mail with the violations.
Okay. It, was there any conversations with the fence company about, we're only allowed a three foot fence?
They never mentioned anything to that effect. I, I didn't, I didn't realize, I mean, the front of our house doesn't have a fence. So I didn't, never even spoke to them about the three foot at all because as I mentioned. That area of our property, we we use it as our side, it's basically our side yard where our children play, where, you know, we have our animals and.
Yeah, I guess, so let me, I get. Since you realize that this is an issue and that there shouldn't be a six foot fence there, have have you guys reached out to the fence company to talk with them about that?
The impression is that, you know, there could possibly be the possibility of having to make some amendments to to it if necessary.
Was there any conversations with? Have there been any talks about if you had to reduce this to a, you know, take it from a six foot to a three foot fence, what the cost would be and would, you know, and who would be covering that?
We just assumed that it would be something that we would have to take care of because. If it would have to be done, so we would just have to do it.
Would it make any difference if the six foot fence was pushed back more onto the property?
No, that's got the practice, from my end, that's got the practical same effect of like tearing it down and doing a rebuild. I get what you're going at.
Yeah, and the problem is it would have to move back to be parallel with the front of the house in order to be considered in the side.
Which would take up that whole space.
Unfortunately, I do blame the town of Warren for portion of this because you can walk in a hole deeper right now by a three foot section of five or a six. And you could put it up, right? You could just start putting fences up and then Matt shows up and says you can't have that there. Yeah, you don't have to have a permit. If we had a permitting process, which we should probably talk about after this. We're gonna eliminate this because we're not gonna be put into that catch twenty two seat. If somebody puts up a six foot fence, it doesn't pull a permit from him. Now all of a sudden, your argument is completely a hundred percent. You're correct. A hundred, you're you're correct right now when I'm saying you're a hundred percent correct because we've covered all the bases. Unfortunately, these people probably didn't know any better.
And again, I'm not trying to insinuate, you know, that, it's just.
I I know, I know. I want to make this black and white, so the next time it comes in front of us, we're not having this argument.
All right, uh let me ask the applicants this. Uh the little goats you've got, are they like the little, I'm not a goat guy.
Nigerian dwarf.
Yeah, I was just at a petting zoo. I was gonna say, Nubian or Nigerian dwarf goats. My daughter loves that, loves those. We're not the ones petting the animals. Uh how high do they jump?
Oh, they can jump pretty high. They can get upwards of like four to five feet. And they could even clear six feet, not even jokingly, they. If they had a good running start in a, in a good parkour situation, they could, they could. But, you know, we do have. We have, we have the dogs and we have other things in place, so we should, that doesn't happen. Cause we have the fence on the inside to contain them. Um essentially from even making it to to the road.
All right, so the goats, the Nigerian dwarf goats. Um three foot fence, they could absolutely clear. Um debatable whether they could clear six. What other animals do you have back there besides the dogs?
Uh we have some geese.
Do the geese, do they fly or the wings clipped?
They don't, they they do not. They're flightless.
Okay, can they, can they hop like, you know?
Could hop a little, maybe two, two to three feet at the most, but I mean, that would be a stretch. They they're, they're very heavy. They eat well. They don't. They don't get off their breath very much.
All right, so the, you've got the the dwarf, the geese, um any other animals besides the dogs?
Chickens.
Okay, um. Similar to the geese, uh chickens don't fly. Um but how far can they kind of hop?
They're, they're um, they're, they're actually Sebastian bull geese, so they're, they don't, they, the types of feathers that they have, they can't really jump that high at all. So maybe like, they could maybe hop a foot away if, at the most, like say if a dog were to frighten them, they could. I mean, the circumstances would have to be ideal for them to even really get very high, but um chickens can jump. So we do have um. We have precautions in that, for that, but three to four feet is generally what will contain them.
Okay, and um any other animals?
Uh we have two turkey.
Okay, um the turkeys, wow, you keep.
That's, after that, we're done. There are no.
All right, same thing. How high can the turkeys jump?
Um they can jump three feet. Yeah, they can definitely clear the three foot fence. Um we have to clip their wings in order to to prevent them, that from happening. But, you know, they have in the past cleared a three foot fence very easily.
Okay, and I know you said you've got some dogs. Um what types of dogs?
Uh they're livestock guardian dogs. They're um great pyrenees.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any sort of an electric fence on the property?
We do, yes. Yeah, and we have um uh GPS collars on the dogs as well that, that keeps them uh safe and protected.
All right, how high can the great pyrenees jump?
I, I have not seen them jump any of our fences, but I'm assuming they could easily clear a three, a three foot fence. Yeah, they're very good. They are um, but we do, like I said, we do have an electric fence that is actually. Even with goats, it's a very uh important asset to have, to keep them safe.
Okay. All right, um. So just so, and this is more for, thank, thank you for going through that. So for the building official and a solicitor. It's because this is considered the front area of the house, which is why they're before us, correct? Okay. And that's just based on the lot layout, but functionally, they don't treat that as their front yard. It's more treated as a side yard, correct? Okay, so that's all been answered in the affirmative um.
I think you should also note, because this was brought to my attention. All the animals that you've mentioned are inside the fence.
Yes.
Coyotes on the outside of the fence.
What I'm trying to establish in my mind to see if, because again, there are problems here. To rectify over it so that we can have, you know, make a motion and ruling that stands up. What are the specific conditions that are around this? Cause if you're just talking, you know, in suburban neighborhood and you throw this up, we got a even bigger problem. But you have been able to explain to me that the types of animals that you have that you're allowed to have at this property could do some serious jumps. And I understand that there's a lot of wildlife in the area as well.
How about a garden? Do you have a garden back there?
Yes.
Garden, yes.
Yep.
Now we're talking about deer's jumping the fence. Did the, the community garden just built an eight foot fence? Because deer can clear six feet every day of the week. And the deer population is out of control right now. I know one farm lost fifty percent of its corn. So.
Well, saying the six foot fence isn't high enough is really helping me.
But I'm just saying that if you're trying to keep things out and in, I mean, they're kind of caught in between not a farm but a farm. We're just gonna catch twenty two over here.
I get it.
I'm just trying to help you be more comfortable and then we can solve the problem after.
I know, it's, like I said, this isn't you guys personally. Like, I get the situation you're in.
We've had it before too.
Yeah, but like, we also, we have to lay out for the interests of the town. It's not just you come before us and, hey, can you fix this for us? Um this is a problem we're starting to see with the town of these sorts of things and it, it bothers me.
But I. Let's do this. Let's clear the public hurdle, uh public portion hurdle. Well, in that case, hold that thought. Um let us uh open the public portion of the hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak on the matter, please, name and address.
Kathleen Morton, one oh four Birch Swamp Road. Owner of Nigerian dwarf dairy goats, chickens, cats, dogs. Anything else, Keith? And so, and live in, they're adjacent. You know, we all have the same property. The coyotes that are in my yard are also coming around the back. And going into their yard, I'm sure. So I would say that when they put the fence up, I completely understood why they would do that. People think that animals are pets and they don't understand that you can't just go over and pet the animal. I mean, the liability if one of the goats who chew everything that they're exposed to. Somebody goes over and tries to pet the pretty goat, next thing you know, they've got a lawsuit because somebody has eaten their hair or bit a finger or something. And with, now that there's more recreation area right on the other kitty corner, you know, where the dam came down. People are gonna be over there, people are at the community garden, so they are much more exposed than they used to be when that was all just kind of a mess. A swamp. And so, you know, I think that I would support the fence in terms of protecting their liability, protecting their animals. And the fact that they cut back that corner, you can see, fine, I go up and down that intersection, you know, sometimes a couple of times a day. And I was pleased that you guys, they changed that so that we can see the traffic coming in all the directions. And so I would speak in support of their, their fence. And I understand that the town needs to make an ordinance that is explicit. I would consider that their side yard. If I was looking at the house, I wouldn't say that's their front yard. Um so I just want to support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there is anyone in the public, anyone else in the public who would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public portion and if you two can come back.
All right, so since I'm the, the guy here, all right, thi- this, this is where, where I'm at. I think based on the unique, highly unique and specific situation which the applicants find themselves. I am okay with the. Variance being approved for the very specific reasons that we were able to enumerate with the animals that you have. Safety as well as wild animals coming inside. And then hearing some tests, some supportive testimony from your neighboring a butter was very helpful. I'm gonna say all of that and say though, this is still an issue I'm pretty hot on. Um, and the only reason. I mean, looking, leaning in favor of this right now is because of the hyper-specific situations you find yourself in. Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think we need a fence ordinance or something. Um, I get it. Nobody wants to be the guy to come in and say, look, you put this thing up, you gotta tear it down. I gotta be honest, so the next time we start seeing some stuff like this coming up, that's where I'm meeting. Um, but I think in the very specific situation the applicants find themselves in, you have a unique, unique scenario. It's kind of a farm area. You've got farm animals. That can do some serious jumping. I get it. Um, in the woods right there, and I think having, um, fortunately, having your neighbor, uh, you know, stick around for a little bit longer. I think that was, that, that helped um, sway me.
You wanna throw that into a motion?
Before you do that, I just wanna correct just for the record, we do have a fence ordinance. We need a fence permit.
What do we have to do to help you get?
We need to put it before the uh, council. We'd have to create an ordinance that would go before the council.
Can we do, is that us? There's only borders?
No, that would come from myself to the solicitor.
Not really, I'm not trying to make more work for you.
No, no, no. But it's gonna help him in the long run.
Yeah.
We get the, it's, this, this game to me through a violation. So if we had an, a permit, I would, I would, we wouldn't be here because it wouldn't have been a violation.
Yeah.
It would have been, you know, could, because what happens, like you said, the companies who install fences are gonna know that we require a permit. They're not gonna put their round registration on the line. They're gonna pull the permit. We don't have one, so.
I guess the question becomes, would an informational memo from this board to the town council help get that done?
Oh, it always would help. I mean, you know, the council would love to hear from you guys.
So we'll have to do that in administrative matters?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Oh, boy. All right, let's uh, give this a crack. All right, um. I move approval of application number ZB twenty-five dash twenty-nine, uh, uh, Lubelia? Lub- Lubelia, uh, Hill and Alfred Hill Junior. Owner and Alfred Hill applicant, seventy-three Schoolhouse Road, Platte Map twenty-one, Lot two ninety-two, request for a variance. Excuse me, to construct a fence in the front yard greater than three feet in height. In the R forty Kickumulit overlay zoning district. In approving this matter, we find that the hardship from which. The applicant seeks is the relief to the unique characteristics of the subject lander's structure. And not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area is not due to the physical or economic disability of the applicant. There's been testimony given that the applicants maintain a um. Semi-farm um, agrarian property. Um, where they live and they also have a large vegetable garden as well as a number of animals, and I'm gonna enumerate them. Nigerian dwarf goats, geese, chickens, turkey. Oh, chicken, sorry for the S, uh, turkey. And uh, great pyrenees, um, and it's been indicated to the board that the goats can very easily jump more than six feet. Uh, in heights, and there's been some concerns of deer uh, being able to clear uh, something more than a three foot fence. There's also been testimony given that geese can, their geese can easily clear a two to three foot. Span as well as the turkeys. And thus, if, if, if they were to install a three foot fence. It's unlikely that fence would be able to contain a good, good amount of their animals. Um, we have also heard testimony from uh, the neighboring a butter. Ms. Kathleen Morton indicating that she owns property uh, adjacent to the applicants. And has uh, confirmed the number of deer and wild animals that can uh, you know, be in the area. So we find that the hardship being that of wild animals um, uh, coming in as well as a inquiring human minds. Um, are unique and it's a hardship that the applicants are seeking relief from. Um, the second uh, standard is that the hardship is not a result of any prior action of the applicant. There's been extensive discussion on my end about this point. Um, and it's been made eminently clear both from uh, the testimony of the applicants as well as from the building official. That this was not a willful and wanton uh, violation. This, uh, this was um. The installation of the six foot fence when a three foot should have been required was done um. Uh, by the fencing company that was hired to install it. The applicants have indicated, given testimony today that they placed their full faith and trust in the fencing company. To install the proper fence and only afterwards, after that was done, were made aware that this uh, was a violation. Again, I'm gonna make, reiterate that uh, we find today that this was not a willful or uh, wanton. Um, uh, hardship that was created by the applicant. Third standard requires that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan. Um, there's been testimony given that this whole uh, portion of where the uh, kicking me with dam was is really going through uh. Redevelopment. There's been a community garden put in and there's been an indication that that is also fenced. Uh, for containment and uh, protection from outside animals. And we find that the installation of the fence as it currently stands by the applicant is in line with that. Uh, to both keep their farm animals and livestock and, and domestic animals inside and keep the wild animals without. Um, we find that if this were not to be granted, it would amount to a more than a mere inconvenience, um, meaning that the relief sought. Uh, is minimal to reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. Um, simply put, were we not to approve this variance, the applicants would be required to deconstruct, tear down or completely remodel. The section uh, uh, in the si- six foot section currently in, in place at great expense, expense of their own. Um. And we find that that would be an unjust burden to require them to do that.
I'll second it. Very good. There's a motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And closing out our lineup for the evening, let's do application ZB twenty-five dash thirty-one. Ernest and Jennifer Agresti, owner and applicant, forty-five Shore Drive, Platte Map seventeen, Lot forty-two. Request for a special use permit to construct, uh, oh. Sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself. We're gonna do, uh, first, let's do this. I will entertain a motion to combine applications ZB twenty-five thirty and ZB twenty-five thirty-one. For the purposes of testimony, we will need two separate motions when it's all said and done. One for the variance and one for the special use permit. So would somebody like to make that motion?
Go moved.
Second?
Aye.
Now, all in favor?
Aye.
So, for the purposes of testimony, we will be doing both application ZB twenty-five thirty. Ernst and Jennifer Agresti, owner and applicant, forty-five Shore Drive, Platte Map seventeen, Lot forty-two. A request for a dimensional variance to construct in addition to the existing residence with less than the allowed. Lot frontage, front yard setback and side yard setback in an R forty residential overlay zoning district. And application ZB twenty-five thirty-one. Ernest and Jennifer Agresti, owner and applicant, forty-five Shore Drive, Platte Map seventeen, Lot forty-two. Request for a special use permit to construct in addition to the existing legal non-conforming residents. With less than the required side yard setback in an R forty residential overlay zoning district. Good evening.
I hope I'm not last, so I'm gonna put everyone to sleep, but um. Oh, sorry, uh, my name is Ernie Agresti. Uh, currently live at forty-two Beverly Road in Swampscott, Massachusetts. Um, and uh, my wife Jennifer and I are the uh, owners of forty-five Shore Drive. In the Twisted Islands neighborhood. Um, we recently purchased the home from my mother. Um, and um, since I am last, I'll, I'll tell a little bit of story for some, uh, little bit of story and history for some context. Hopefully it won't put you to sleep, but uh, so Twisted's be, is a very special place to our, to our family. We've had multiple generations. Um, and cousins and uncles and aunts that um, you know, are in the neighborhood. My parents actually met there when their families were summering and. And uh, obviously married and had us and then uh, as uh, children, we spent the summers in the home next door to forty-five. It was my grandparents' home. And uh, we spent uh, the day after, the day after school until the day before school, every summer there from when maybe I was, I was four. And um. And it's uh, you know, it's a little bit of a, little bit of a homecoming for me and a, and a fun introduction for, for my wife. Um, and nineteen eighty, in the eighties, my parents bought the house next door. Uh, and they renovated it so that um, so that they could uh, live there through their retirement. And then interestingly, my sister bought my grandparents' house and she renovated that one at thirty, the, the number thirty-nine next door. And um, she's, she's since deceased, but my brother-in-law still owns, still owns the house there. So we have a lot of connections to the neighborhood. And um, you know, we're, we, we spent a lot of time there this summer and just, we're getting really excited about, about making it our, our new home. Um. The um. Um, in the, in your packet, you have the um. Uh, a chart of the uh, zoning dimensional uh, regulations, what's required, what's, what's proposed. Um, and uh, the currently, the house is deficient in um, three areas. Um, it has a hundred feet of frontage or a hundred and twenties required. Um, the existing front yard setback is nineteen feet where thirty-five is required. And the north side yard setback is seven foot four inches where twenty's required. Not unusual for the neighborhood, um, if anyone's been down there. Most of these homes were built. Um, and this, the whole plat developed when the uh, the zoning was very different and the setbacks were mu- much, much smaller. Which of course is why you have the overlay district, cause you probably be getting so many requests. Um. Um, the, the real problem for us is, is not so much the setbacks, um, but what's driving the um, the requests today is that. Um, where also, a portion of the house is also in the flood plain. Well, the house is actually three levels. And um, the lowest portion of the house is at about approximately elevation ten. The uh, the new FEMA maps now have the flood elevation at thirteen, and then the upper portion of the house is at fifteen. So, um. The upper, the, the upper portion of the house, uh, we'd like to do a, a major renovation. Um, and we'd also like to try and have it be um, one level. Well, it turns out we kind of have no choice for it to be one level. Because in order to spend the money on the main home, we have to demolish the part that's in the flood plain. Or we're limited on how much money we can spend renovating the current home. And um, so we have no choice. We've got to demo that. Um, but the rules do allow for you to have a non-living area there. So basically what we're looking to do is take the. The lower level, which is currently a bedroom, mechanical rooms and a bathroom, basically. Put that up on a second floor and put a garage underneath it. And um, to have enough of a, of a footprint to uh, make that work and so that it looks. Looks, doesn't look like a box architecturally. Uh, we're looking to go um, toward the street um, into the, into the setback. At that portion of the proposed project, so that we would have, then have a twenty-six foot setback. So that would be. I think the way to say it is that would be less non-conforming than the existing structure to the northeast, which has a setback of nineteen feet.
So you're actually, it looks like you're improving the deficiency, correct?
Well, I'm improving, I'm improving, I'm not demolishing the portion of the house that's setback nineteen feet. That's staying. That's in the, that's in the, if you look at your submissions, that's in the um. The way the plans are set up, that'd be top right corner. So if you look at your, if you look at A, sheet A one. The blue, you know, yours in color? Okay, the blue is the exist, is the existing story and the black crosshatch area is the addition.
No.
On A one?
Uh, A zero. The architectural site plan A zero.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Yes. Am I correct, as we're looking at the first photo that you've provided to us? The section in the front with the two windows, that is the area that would no longer be living space would be.
Correct, and, and since you have it up and you're pointing, if you, if you're pointing at it, you know, basically. The seat, if you move up, your pencil up to that, that double door, the addition would go from that second, from. But move your pencil to the left of the door. So basically, we're looking to go from there.
Out towards, yep.
Just, so that's the um. Those are the dimensional um, and, and flood plain. Um, not really specifically applicable, applicable here, but we do have, also have an aging septic system that's. Um, within fifty, fifty feet of the um, of the waterfront. That we're looking to pull back as far as we can away from the waterfront. As some may know, you're, you're technically supposed to be a hundred feet back. They'll sometimes allow a variance for fifty feet, but you also have to be a hundred feet away from the well. So, so the areas, you know, we're trying to maintain um, uh, land on the uh, west side of the property. So that we can do um, a proper septic system, um, but also not build closer to the water. Um, if, if you looked at this property on an aerial, you'd see almost all the homes along here, all go, even though they don't have to. Everyone's been respectful over the years and pretty much everyone has stayed that distance back. And so no one's waterfront views are, are affected or obstructed. So we'd like to try and respect that if, if we could, so it'll be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Um. Um, so the overall, the overall project, um. Cause we combined the applications, um, in addition to the um, um. Removing the lower portion, building a garage with a bedroom above it. Um, we're also um, looking to build a uh, screen porch just to the north of that and a, a, a vestibule. An airlock vestibule because there is in the current house um, next to that. Excuse me. Um, at the same time, um, you know, this is a home we hope to uh, you know, fill with people mostly at the holidays. And the dining area is a little bit small, so there's an existing co- uh, coverage deck that we'd like to impose and make part of the house. And then the existing open deck, um, we're, we're looking to cover. That work is all within. Within building, building setback, but we're modifying a pre-existing non-conforming use and. Um, and uh, so that's, that's part of this proposal as well.
And if I'm correct, you are not requesting a variance for lot coverage, correct? So the addition.
Correct, it's well within, yeah, the lot coverage. I'd have to go back to my chart. The lot coverage is.
I guess that was thirteen percent.
Yeah, twenty percent's allowed and we're, we're gonna be under fourteen percent.
So just to work with you, when you did can do the lot coverage. You're doing the proposed existing house, including any above-grade decks, terraces and that shed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's what we'll have to do as well for when we go to CRMC.
Just wanted to make sure you didn't forget about those, that's, okay.
Yeah, no, well, my sister's, uh, my sister's my architect, um, and this is her third house actually on Shore Drive that she's done. Um, so she's in La Pago Islands right now, visiting her daughters on a, a little bit of a, uh. What would you call it? A mission trip? Or she would, she would be here with us and, in fact, she just, she'll, you'll see her maybe next month or the next month after, because she actually decided she was. You know, bought a house herself and Warren two streets over and uh, she'd like to add a bedroom there, but.
And change the name of the road. It'll be uh, Your Guy's Street.
Oh, no, that's okay. I don't need that much attention, um.
So a lot of what's driving this is the flood plain?
Yes.
The change in the flood plain. Just cause I'm curious, by turning that into non-occupiable space, does that now mean you don't need flood insurance?
Uh, correct. Yes. Yep, as long as it's above that thirteen foot elevation, has to be one foot above the thirteen, I think it's one foot above the thirteen foot elevation. This is, I understand it from our engineer. Um. Let's see. This will allow, also allow us to get our mechanic, Matt will make me do it anyway, but uh, as part of the renovation, but you know, we'll get the mechanical systems. Which are in that, also in that lower area.
Oh.
Those have to come up.
Got you.
Um, as well, so.
So all, all the functional systems within the house would be raised above.
Correct. Yep. Um, so the, the um, although we're looking for relief to go closer to the street, I included some pictures um, of, from the street. So that you could see what type of screening is there. Um, there's a, there's a, you know, mature. Um, there's a, there's a, you know, mature evergreens and uh cedars. There's a lot of cedars in that neighborhood and. My mom planted a bunch of rhododendrons that are probably ten feet tall mixed in there and um. So, in fact, I went to, I went to visit as many of the neighbors as I could and a couple of them said, I can't see your house. Where is it again? So it's, and we like that part. It's 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 nice and private. Um, we have no intention of of thinning that out or cutting that at all. Um, we we consider that a nice feature of the building, um, or the home. Um. And. So I I I, we we believe that my sister's design um, uh, aligns with the neighborhood characteristic. And I don't think it's having any impact there. She's actually dovetailed the design, the proposed design with the home next door that she did for my sister and my brother-in-law. So they're gonna be of similar style, um, and similar roof lines. And like I said, like I said earlier, she went out of her way not to make it a box. Even though that would have given a huge, nice huge bedroom, it just wouldn't really fit in, you know? I would love for that to be a little bigger, a little bit, you know, more of a master bedroom with maybe an extra sink or something, but it's it's just not, doesn't fit. Um, so we're, we tried very hard to make it um, fit the scale and the character of the neighborhood that we love so much. Um. I attempted to contact all the butters. Um, I met with all but three, three didn't get back to me. Uh, so um, there were, there were no objections and and lots of, lots of support, um, at least verbally to me. Um, and I also uh, just in case I, you asked, I also on my own took a laser measurer and. Measured from the edge of the uh pavement to the other homes closest to me, like the five closest homes. And they all have a, they're all have a similar setback that I do. It's 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 basically thirty feet off the edge of pavement, but the right of way is ten feet wire. So they're, they're all about the same fifteen to twenty foot um setbacks um, off off the street. So I think in that respect, it's also, also, actually, that's that's to my existing house and I'm only looking for twenty six feet. Add ten, I'm really thirty six feet back. So I'm, so the proposal here is more than ten feet back from what the other homes have for existing setbacks. Well, that's what I.
Right.
That's what I can share.
Are there any immediate questions from the board? Because we can take care of the public portion while you guys are considering.
Watch out for the crowd.
Yep. Uh, you can stay right where you are. We will officially open the public portion of the. Of the uh, application, as there is no one else in the room. I don't expect anyone to walk forward, but I will note. Uh, I have marked as exhibit one, a letter from Dean Amrose, fifteen Summit Drive, one of the butters. And that is a letter uh, in support, an endorsement of this application. Uh, so that can write as exhibit one in the official record. Uh, seeing no additional public comment, we will close the public portion of the application. And bring it back to the board and the applicant. Thoughts and questions?
Is there an order that would be preferable to do a the variance as opposed to the special use permit first or such?
Special use permits first.
Right.
That being said, want to give it a shot?
Yeah, I'll give it a crack.
Alright.
Alright, um, I move approval of application number ZB twenty five thirty one. Ernest and Jennifer Agresti, Agresti, owner and applicant forty five Shore Road, plat map seventeen lot forty two. Request for a special use permit to construct in addition into the existing legal non-conforming residents. With less than the required side yard setback in the R forty residential overlay zoning district. And uh, moving to approve the specialty permit, special use permit. We find that the special use will be compatible with the neighboring land uses. Uh, this is a very mature neighborhood um, in this part of town and there are a lot of small lots, um. Uh, you know, substandard lots. And uh, it it's very common in this part of town to find homes in a similar situation. Where they may be illegal, uh, non-conforming residents. And we do find that this is something that is not out of the usual. We find that the special use as presented will not create a hazard to the neighborhood. Um, there has been test extensive testimony given by the applicant as to the whys of the proposed um, property. And uh, why they can, why they have to build it where they will. And there's also been indication uh. Both from testimony of the applicant as well as from the plans submitted, that the addition um. Is going to uh, you know, go forward as minimally as possible uh, close to Shore Road. We don't find that that's going to cause any hazard at all. We find that the special use permit is compatible with the community comprehensive plan. Um, this is allowing um. Uh, if uh, uh, the applicant is a spouse to age in place. And indeed, it's encouraging to see former Warrenites returning home and uh, mov- moving back into the area. And we find that the public convenience and welfare will be served for the same reasons. Um, as well as this may have an opportunity to increase the tax rolls with the addition. And as far as any of the conditions for the variances, so I will take care of that in the next. Um, but I will say in granting the special use permits, we are going to condition this. That the applicant comply with all state, local and federal are regulatory. And administrative bodies and obtain any all necessary permits and licenses.
Of course.
Are there any other conditions? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. And once more with feeling.
Alright, I move approval of application number ZB twenty five thirty. Ernest and Jennifer Agresti, owner and applicant forty five Shore Drive, plat map seventeen lot forty two. Request for a dimensional variance to construct in addition to the existing residence with less than the allowed lot frontage. Front yard setback and side yard setback in the R forty residential overlay zoning district. In granting this variance, uh, we find that the hardship with the applicant seeks uh, relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure. And not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area and is not due to the fiscal or economic disability of the applicant. Um, we are very familiar with this part of town. The lots are small, um, the houses are really crammed in. And this is not a, uh, this is not the first time we've seen this type of a project in this neighborhood. Um, this is a relief that is uh, you know, relatively unique to this piece of land in this area. We find that the hardship is not the act, is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. Um, indeed, the applicant has come before us. Um, and there's been testimony given that the house as it currently stands is could be going to be having some habitability um, issues with the uh, uh. Newly released FEMA flood flood planes. Um, and instead, the applicant is looking to modernize the home and bring it up um, into modern conformity. We find that granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area. Or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. Um, again, this is a mature neighborhood with um, houses on very small lots. And they're very often crammed in and it's very common in this area to find homes. Um, uh, not in conformity with the established front and side yard setbacks. Um, and as such, he he granting this relief is not going to alter the general character of the surrounding area. As there are many other homes in similar similarly situated. And it will not impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance of the comprehensive plan as this is allowing. Um, you know, long-time Warrenites to return home and enjoy, enjoy their properties as well as to improve them structurally. In granting the dimensional variance, we find that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance were not to be granted. Amounts to more than a mere inconvenience, meaning that the relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use. To which the property is proposed to be devoted. There's been testimony given as well as review of the submitted plans that as the house currently stands, kind of chopped up into different levels. And this lower, lowerest, uh, the lowest of those levels um, currently falls within a FEMA FEMA flood flood plane. And is currently uh, maintains a uh, I believe it was a bedroom residence. Uh, by allowing this addition to take place, the applicant's going to be redesigning the home. So that there will be no living quarters within the um, uh, flood plain, uh, which is as required, uh, as appears to us by FEMA. And that will also have a great effect on any sort of requirement for flood insurance. So were we not to grant this, this would be much more than a mere inconvenience as it would deprive the applicant of useful enjoyment of the home. And would uh, essentially chop off a current usable area. We will memorialize the uh, dimensional variances sought. Um, there are three. Minimum lot frontage, uh, there's current, there is one hundred and twenty feet is required. Currently, there is one hundred feet existing and thus we find the variance granted is out of twenty feet. For the minimum front yard setback, thirty five feet is required, nineteen feet um, is proposed. Should have done the math, resulting in a variance of.
Sixteen feet.
Are you good at math?
Think I got that.
Yes, sixteen feet. Okay. And a minimum side yard setback, uh, uh, minimum side yard setback to the north where twenty feet is required. Seven feet uh, four inches is existing. Which results in.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Eight.
Twelve feet and eight inches uh, granted for the variance. Um. As we gave, I put the stipulation for the special use permits, uh, you know, requirement for uh, building codes, ordinances and whatnot. Do you think we need to memorialize that here?
Uh, no, I think if we've got it on one.
Alright.
Any other conditions? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
You are very welcome. Uh, that concludes the business for the evening. I think under administrative matters, it would just be a matter of. Essentially deciding that we're going to send a memo recommending.
We need a motion.
Yeah, how would we do that?
Okay, uh. One in two ways, you said, um, motion to have chair draft a letter to console. Requesting that the permit system on fences, all leaving directs, most of the direct, the building official, they got. So. Different ways.
What's gonna make everybody's life easier or?
Matt, what makes it easier?
Oh, we have to go to administrative, uh, for administrative.
What would make it easier if um, just, I think it would just be a memo and support. Um, requesting that we have a permit. Um, elaborate as to why you believe and tomorrow I'll also uh. I looked at the ordinance, it's not, it's just, it's just adding language. Just adding a permit. Yeah, so it's not a lengthy ordinance per se. I I believe it's, it's just, uh, you know, adding it to our permit schedule.
Permitting, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, per per, technically per the state, anything greater than seven feet, you're supposed to get a a permit.
Yeah.
But.
We're gonna keep having this problem.
That's yeah.
Alright, we're trying to help you before it comes to you.
Uh. Uh, thank you. I'll say thank you.
Thank you for the moral work I don't ask. Alright, I make a motion that uh, zoning board, zoning board of review. Uh, direct the chair to issue a memorandum of support. Good night. Issue memorandum of support uh, to the building officials um, uh, proposed. Uh, requirement to have a uh, fence permitting system put into place.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Haley, would you mind just dropping me an email to remind me about that in the next day or so? Um, and I will try and get that drafted up so that we can review it at our next meeting and then send that off.
Sounds good.
Very good. Is there anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?